We want to welcome you to our city commission regular meeting. We ask that you turn off for silent cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and at midnight and also available for viewing on YouTube. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have a proclamation.
How are you? Good to see you.
The Leavenworth Public Schools Education Foundation believes that all parents and community members can participate with the school district to enrich public education, and the foundation seeks to encourage all students to work to their highest potential by providing opportunities for unique educational experiences. And the foundation encourages Leavenworth Unified School District Number 453, teaches to implement innovative instructional strategies by funding original programs and projects, and the foundation is resolved through the administration of its gifts to support education in the Leavenworth Unified School District Number 453. Now therefore, I Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim the week of September the 30th through October the 4th, 2019, as Leavenworth Public Schools Education Foundation.
Thanks, Mayor. Awesome. How are you all? Thank you so much for having us tonight. This is always an exciting time, and this year especially because we are celebrating 20 years of giving back to the community. That is just, in my mind, phenomenal. It's a testament to this community, and what we do every day for students in the Leavenworth Schools is just remarkable. And it's not just about the money, you know, we are a fundraising organization. It's not about the money so much as it is about the impact for students. We allow students to soar in STEAM activities. We provide books for students that might not otherwise have them. We help open doors and experiences for students that they might not otherwise have. So we really are, we kind of consider us the icing on the district budget cake, and so it's a pleasure to serve our community, and we just appreciate the partnership with Leavenworth and appreciate you all acknowledging our work. I would love to share along with our exciting news of 20 years of giving here next week, next Thursday, October 3rd, the Leavenworth Schools Education Foundation is bringing in the world famous Harlem Wizards basketball team. And your center folk there in the middle, Mayor Jermaine Wilson, will be our referee for that game. The Wizards will be playing a wonderful collection of Leavenworth Elementary and Middle School teachers. Mayor, do you remember the name of our team? The Leavenworth Blue Crew, right? The Leavenworth Blue Crew. That's the name of our team. So it is absolutely sure to be a great time. Anyone in the community is welcome. Tickets will be available at the door. Again, that's next Thursday, October 3rd, at Leavenworth High School in the main gym. Tickets are available in the schools if you choose to get them ahead of time. At the door, they will be $12 for students and 15 for adults. We welcome and encourage and invite everyone to attend. So more good stuff every day. We're working for students, and thank you all for the recognition.
What time?
6:30 tip-off. Doors open at 5:30. Lots of fun.
I have a question. Has the Blue Crew been practicing or is that going to go into the game call?
You know what? They are practicing in their own right, and they're going to come together. It's going to be amazing. Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate it. Old business consideration of previous meeting minutes. If there's no questions, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Minutes from September 10th, 2019, regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, new business, citizen participation. Let's open up for any citizens who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda. If not, moving on. General items, request for parking lot closure northeast corner of Cherokee Street and South Second Street.
City Clerk Coler Williamson will handle this item.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a request for a closure of a portion of one of the city municipal parking lots. It's that section on Cherokee Street of that parking lot directly behind 203 Delaware Street. So officially, actually, it's in front of First City Wine and Spirits. So they are requesting a closure of that for the Leavenworth Cruisers Car Show that's going to be held on Saturday, October 26th. They're asking that we close that at 8:00 PM on Friday evening so that when they, for Saturday morning, so that there's no cars parked there and they have room to park the cars for the car show. So that is the request before the commission. We have Mr. Mark Herzog here this evening if you have any additional questions on that closure.
Any questions?
Is this an annual event or semi-annual or...?
This is the first time we've done it. We're a new store. We opened in March, so we're just trying to get attention to the store. I would figure that would be a good way to do it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
There's no questions though. Entertain the motion.
I move that we approve closing a portion of the parking lot at the northeast corner of Cherokee Street and South Second Street from 8:00 PM Friday, October 25th, 2019, to 5:00 PM Saturday, October 26th, 2019.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0.
Sounds like great. Sounds great.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Next item on the agenda, consider transient merchant license for Gypsy Aces Haymarket Square.
So also be our city clerk.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a request by Gypsy Aces. They've submitted an application to the city clerk's office to have a motorcycle swap meet at Haymarket Square. They've reserved that through the Parks and Recreation Department. Because they are having a swap meet, they are going to be selling new and used motorcycle parts along with it, so that would fall under the requirement to get a transient merchant waiver to allow them to do that since it is on city property. We have two gentlemen here this evening, Carl Strickler and Ralph Palmer, if you have any additional questions for them on that. As always, the city clerk's office does work with the vendor and make sure that they are aware that they have to get sales tax certificates for anyone who's doing the sale of product and that that is reported to the Kansas Department of Revenue.
What's the hours of your swap meet? Is that 6 to 2? Is that correct?
6 to 2 is when we have it reserved for. We're setting up from 6 to 8. It'll actually be going from 8 to around 2.
What is a motorcycle swap meet? What is that?
People bring their used parts they want to get rid of, new parts. We have some vendors coming in, bringing some stuff. It's the first year we've done this. We do a motorcycle show every year down there. We do a dog run every year that we donate the money to the dog pound, and then usually we use our bike show money for our Toys for Tots at the end of the year. This year, our bike show was before Toys for, before the dog run, so we ended up putting all the money at the dog run. So we're doing this so we have money to donate for the Toys for Tots at the end of the year.
That's great.
Now, is your business Gypsy Aces? Is that...?
It's a motorcycle club. It's not really a business for a nonprofit.
Okay, got it.
This is on Sunday. That's good. Yeah, I was worried about the farmer's market, so it's on a Sunday, so we're okay.
Okay.
A lot of people come in because they travel all around. People's motorcyclists that are aficionados look for that special part for a '71 Yamaha or something like that. I know. You'll do well if the weather holds. But you've got the overhang, so Haymarket Square is a great place to do it.
You got any parts for mopeds?
You got a Harley, Harley moped, did you? What a Harley moped.
I appreciate it though.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, wish you the best.
Good for you.
There's other questions, comments? I entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor...
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve transient merchant license for Gypsy Aces for Haymarket Square on September 29th as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Thank you, sir.
Good luck. Thank you very much. Have fun.
Next item on the agenda, approve purchasing policy.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the city staff brought some proposed changes to the procurement policy to a recent study session and then brought them back this evening. There's been no changes since the presentation. If there's any questions about the changes, we'd be happy to ask, answer those questions. We have our finance department director and deputy director here tonight if you have any specific questions.
Mr. Mills, first of all, I think it's a good document. It's comprehensive, well-written. My concern is I think there's still some cleanup that needs to be made in terms of when you discuss RFPs and proposals that come from the firms that are submitting their proposals to the RFP. To me, it's not as clear as it needs to be. Sometimes those two terms are used synonymously, so I'm ready to approve this document tonight, but I would just like pages 20 to 24, pretty much just review those and just make sure that what we're writing is clear. Because there is a difference between an RFP being issued by the city and then the firms, they're not submitting an RFP back, they're submitting a proposal in response to the RFP.
Okay.
So, and that's my input. That's the only place I see that really needs some cleanup.
We'll update the language.
All right. Any other comments? There's none. I entertain the motion.
I move that we approve, adopt, adopt the purchasing policy as presented.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, resolutions. Resolution B 2234, consolidated annual performances and evaluation for CDBG.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, we have four housing items coming up, or four HUD-related items coming up. The first one will be handled by Mary Dwyer, Community Development Coordinator.
You guys are lucky tonight. Housing, housing, housing. There you go. Okay, so I'm here representing the Community Development Block Grant. Every year, we're required by the federal government to do the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, which is HUD's way of gauging what we've done for the year. This year, we had several areas that we worked in as we do each year. We did home repair, which we provide for low, moderate income families or individuals who need assistance with their homes, their homeowners. We will provide up to $5,000 on a sliding scale for those repairs. This year, we did 26 of those repairs as opposed to last year when we did 20. On the other side of the coin, it seems like these two go up and down correspondingly. Last year, we had more homeownership program participants. This year, we've had five, and so we'll work harder at trying to get those numbers up. We had four demolitions of dangerous structures, and then we had a fifth one that kind of lapsed into the next year, so we can still pay for that with the funds. And then we also paid funds to public service agencies, and we served 7,292 people with some of those funds. So that's, that's the bulk of those funds. We also have an emergency solutions grant, which is issued through the state that provides homelessness services. There's homelessness prevention, and we had two families that participated in that, nine people. That gets them kind of started from zero forward. And then rapid rehousing, we also had some folks in there, and the total for the two of them was 23 individuals. I'd be glad to answer any questions about our program.
Question. How does the homeless prevention program work?
We, we are, we get funds through the state, and we apply in behalf of agencies. This year and last year, we applied in behalf of Catholic charities. They get those funds and they do two programs. One's called homeless prevention, and that's for people who are about to be homeless, either due to utilities or rent or some kind of issue that they've got going on. And the other one is rapid rehousing. That's for people who actually became homeless, and it's trying to help them get feet underneath them and back into housing as quickly as possible. So that program, we work with Catholic charities currently.
So the, the amount that was expended in your, in the policy report was about $258,000. Was, was part of that the $146,000 for the capital fund program? Was it, is that something different?
Capital fund is, is different.
Okay. So how much in terms of the $258,000, I mean, how much was the city allocated for this particular Community Development Block Grant, just approximately?
This year, we were allocated, let me just pull her up here, $334,736.
So the, so the delta there, will that balance? I think I asked you this last year. Will that roll over to next year?
It does. It does. And, and part of that, part of that difference was that we didn't have as many people apply for the homeownership program, which I'm meeting tomorrow actually with some bankers and some real estate agents and try to see where the break is in that kind of program. And then the other one is that we just didn't do as many demos as we had anticipated that we would do, because they were given 90 days or whatever, so it made them fall within the next year. So next year, which is actually currently ongoing, but we may have, we may have more than we had anticipated. It's kind of an ebb and flow thing.
The other question I have was, there's a sentence in the policy report that said, "Funds also provide landlord/tenant resolution to support decent, safe, and sanitary housing conditions for Leavenworth residents." Was any of the money used for that this, you know, this reporting year?
What we do is we work with Welcome Central. We fund them directly to do landlord/tenant resolution, and they have had some landlords. It's primarily tenants that come to that program, but they have had some landlords who need some guidance in how to do the process of changing tenants. Let's just put it that way. And so instead of having those individuals come to the city, we've in the past had Welcome Central do that. Now, the city will have someone upcoming who, who will be doing that area.
That's where I was going with this.
Yeah. And when, and when that happens, I've already worked with Welcome Central that they'll continue to provide services until that happens, and when that happens, they will be very, they're going to be happy to let go of that. And so we will then reallocate those funds in some other area.
Thank you. That's what I, that's where I was heading.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions or want to know about any of the programs that we offer in that?
I'm always surprised when they don't take advantage of the first-time home buyers.
Me, me too. I, you know, it's an awareness thing. We've tried doing rack cards, and we've tried doing outreach programs and working individually with real estate offices where I go and speak, you know, on their Tuesday meeting. But, but you've just got to keep working at it. I think also part of the problem is that the lower part of the housing market in Leavenworth is really tight right now. There's just not a lot of houses in that first-time home buyer category where they're available at the price point that they qualify for.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
But we'll keep working at it. It's a good program.
There's no other comments. I entertain the motion.
I move we accept Resolution B 2234, the consolidated annual performance and evaluation for Community Development Block Grant Program.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Resolution B 2235, 2019 Capital Fund Program Grant, Planters Two.
This will be Andrea Cheatham, the Housing Manager for the Leavenworth Housing Authority.
Hello. Each year, HUD requires us to submit documents so they can calculate the capital fund grant. It's basically calculated on your leasing rate, how many units you had available throughout the year. I'm happy to say that Planters Two stays leased up. We normally have a turnover. If somebody moves out on the 31st, the unit is rented before the end of the next month. So with that being said, we are receiving the maximum capital fund grant, and we use this grant to do improvements for the building.
That's great.
What were some of the, for the, for last year, what were some of the major? And I know you came and just remind us what were some of the major improvements?
Actually, we're working on the same project. It's going to be massive. We're replacing all the pipes from cast iron to PVC in the building. We were submitting specs and not getting them approved because of the fire rating issues with such a large structural. So we're currently working with an architect and an engineer firm to get the correct specs to make sure everything's done properly and safely and up to code.
All right. There's no other questions or comments. I entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2236, Capital Fund Program, Five-Year Action Plan, and 2020 Capital Fund Annual Statement Performance and Evaluation Report for Planters Two.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution B 2237, Section 8 Administrative Plan.
Should be Pat Tuley to handle this item.
This is just a housekeeping issue. We just, this is the actual thing that you guys are approving. What it is, is it goes through the regulations of HUD.
Could you go through that page by page real quick?
It took three months, but, and then any time that there's a gray area or something that they say you can do A or B, then we have to spell out what we do for each thing. So it's from bringing people on to kicking people off and everything in between, how we do our job, and that's it.
Is this something we have to approve every year, or is this something that we're...?
Every, pretty much every month, I get something that changes in the regulation, but it's always like instead of light or dark pink, it's light red, you know, it's just how they word it. But if there's any ever, any major issues, I'll bring that to Julie, who will return, I'm sure, take it to Paul, and he'll bring it for you if there's anything that we need to do.
And was your office, the city's office that regulates and manages this program, was there some type of recognition in 2018? Did I see that here, or was that in a previous? I thought there was some type of recognition that the, the office had gotten.
Are you talking about the, the high performer?
Yeah, yes.
We're currently still, we still have the same rating. We're a high performer, 1030, which is an excellent rating.
And the last time we got that was in, like, 2018?
We receive it every year, so next year, we kind of, you know, as long as we keep doing everything we're supposed to do, we'll get it again for 2019.
Mr. Tuley, would you, would you report, repeat what Ms. Cheatham said for the TV and for the, yeah.
Nothing against you. You wouldn't be heard on TV.
HUD rates each housing authority for multiple things, and we are a high performer. We have been a high performer since I've, well, almost since I've been there. When I took over, we were not a high performer, but for the last eight years, we've been a high performer, and I assume it will be that forever.
Is high performer the highest rating?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do any, do any specific benefits accrue to the, to the office as a result of this rating?
Both of us can get larger amounts because of that, yes, sir.
That's good. Thank you for what you do. Yep, there's no other comments. I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2237, Section 8 Administrative Plan.
I'll second it.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, Commissioner Bowder, consent agenda.
Thank you very much, sir. After review of the claims, I move to approve the claims for September 7, 2019 through September 20, 2019, in the amount of $1,072,133.2. Net amount for payroll number 19 effective September 13, 2019, in the amount of $347,361.41. No police and fire pension.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. We are at the end of our meeting. I just want to once again thank our city staff, the commission, O'Neil and Events Marketing Team for putting together a great event, the Camp Leavenworth Festival. It was definitely a huge success. How many people attended?
About 9,000.
About 9,000 people, and it was awesome. So it was great. Yeah, yada-sama. Definitely looking forward to next year as well. At this time, Commissioner Bowder?
Yeah, the city staff is, I mean, always wonderful, but it was so clean.
Yes, yeah.
And having it enclosed, I think, made it feel very safe. I really enjoyed that. Anyway, I, the only thing I have is, and this really didn't have to do with, with our commission right now, but I get a lot of calls from people asking again about transportation, and I just want everyone to know that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. We have several players in our community that we, we have, that are several resources, and all of these things take time, and so, but it hasn't been dropped. It's still, we're still looking into it, and we're still gathering information, and, you know, that's all I can say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dedk.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Griswold?
No, I don't have anything.
Commissioner Priceinger?
I just want to echo what the mayor said, and we've all said about Camp Leavenworth what a success it was. Great family event, great community event. No issues that I saw. I was there both days at different times. Parking, not an issue. People will walk, and we had, and there was a huge event at the community center right in the middle of Camp Leavenworth where 300 people at a wedding reception at the community center, and everyone was accommodated. So, you know, we do have the room downtown to help, and I once again commend O'Neil Events and Marketing. I hope that we possibly enter into a contract with them next year to do it. It's, it was just outstanding event, and I think most people realize that 10th Avenue between Michigan and Limit is being worked on, and I think the paving will start. Maybe Mr. Kramer can give us a little update. It may start maybe this week. I don't know when it'll be complete, but it will be a, a fine road when it's finished.
Just two things. 10th Avenue, the update on that is they swept the entire project today, which is the final step to get all the loose pieces down. They will start paving tomorrow. The plan is to pave one lane at a time, so Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then they would be done with paving on Friday. Ahead of each row of paving, as they move along, they'll continue to fill some of the seams, some of the failed seams, with asphalt ahead. If they're able to finish by Friday, there'll still be about another week or so of work. What they're going to be doing after that is cutting joints and sealing them, which as... People will walk and we had, and there was a huge event at the community center right in the middle of Camp Leavenworth where 300 people had a wedding reception at the community center and everyone was accommodated. So, you know, we do have the room downtown to help and I once again commend O'Neil Events and Marketing. I hope that we possibly enter into a contract with them next year to do it. It's, it was just an outstanding event. And I think most people realize that 10th Avenue between Michigan and Limit is being worked on and I think the paving will start. Maybe Mr. Kramer can give us a little update. May start maybe this week. I don't know when it will be complete, but it will be a, a fine road when it's finished.
Just two things. 10th Avenue, the update on that is they swept the entire project today, which is the final step to get all the loose pieces down. They will start paving tomorrow. The plan is to pave one lane at a time, so Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, then they would be done with paving on Friday. Ahead of each row of paving, as they move along, they'll continue to fill some of the seams, some of the failed seams with asphalt ahead. If they're able to finish by Friday, there'll still be about another week or so of work. What they're going to be doing after that is cutting joints and sealing them, which as we talked about when the project first was announced, that'll allow a little bit of movement and flexibility in the asphalt. And then, of course, striping will come after they're done with the joints and the ceiling. But if everything goes well, weather goes well, equipment doesn't break down, we move ahead as, as we expect to, paving would be complete by the end of the day on Friday.
Excellent.
Would the road, would the road open the next day or?
Yeah, it would remain open the whole time as they're back out there cutting saw, sawing joints and sealing them and striping. There'll be again more control, lane closures and stuff like that, but it'll remain open the entire time.
Is the striping supposed to be done on Friday or will that be?
No, striping will come after they cut the, cut the new joints and seal the new joints. So, maybe by the end of next week, they'll be striping, but.
That's fine. Kind of get an idea.
Yep, it's part of the project. And then, I did want to talk about another event just because I appreciate the way that they worked with us. The VFW is having a concert down in the very similar area to the Camp Leavenworth. They had moved this around the community a couple of different places. They had settled on Haymarket maybe during Camp Leavenworth and they were very good to work with and I think we accommodated them, so there'll be another event this weekend down at Landing Park. We're only going to close the north half of the parking lot, so those residents of the stove factory loft should, can still park in the south part of the parking lot, right there by the river. Most of the activities of this event will be on the other side of the fence. We've been working with them and believe it's going to be a good, good event. I believe it's in coordination with Suicide Awareness Month, so I want to thank the VFW for doing that and for working with us around Camp Leavenworth.
That's good. Yep, that's awesome. And great job too. Those basketball goals look excellent at Bob Doherty Park, yeah. At this time, if there's no other questions or comments, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.